Right now, everyone's kind of settled.
We don't sign the ordinance. We just sign that value.
Yeah. And that'll get changed.
The ordinance that it needed.
So it's working.
I asked, I mean, Mark, look, can you go to corrections in the ordinance?
Okay.
Did you?
How was your first?
In, uh, okay.
Okay, we're talking about a ordinance.
Oh, really?
And we're bringing out of the public area.
Now, nothing, nothing specific. They, they, maybe some other.
I think, okay.
Diving who's.
Yeah, I was like, really? Ten percent.
They come over after we did our. Yeah.
Really, so we call it eight percent.
They've been, they've kept it.
Yeah.
I see for a while there, that was like.
All the order, the city council meeting for December twelfth, twenty twenty-three. Please joins me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. Do you hear in my language, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, welcome all. Roll call Cindy.
Honorable Mayor Grover.
Present.
Councilmember Oberhauser.
Aye, aye.
Councilmember Schmidt.
Present.
Councilmember Bartels.
Present.
Councilmember Weissman.
Yeah.
Guard.
Present.
Councilmember Hilton.
Here.
Councilmember Posuma.
Present.
Thank you Cindy. Next on the agenda is our citizen comments. If there's anybody in the, in the chambers here or on Zoom that wish to comment to our city council, now is your opportunity. Please state your name and your address for the record, please. And if you could limit your comments to two minutes, please.
Only two minutes. My name is Ruthie Hamford. I live at three thirteen Erie Street. And me and my posse would like to say, thank you Jill, time served fifteen years. And now you can come back to the people that are still serving time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes, Corinna, come on up. Name and address for the record, please.
Uh, my name is Corinna Donnerburg and I live in Cheney. I would like to use my time tonight to advocate for an immediate and permanent ceasefire in Gaza. To stop the killing and create an opportunity to address the humanitarian catastrophe there. During the second week of Advent, as a person of faith, I am joining my voice with others to call for peace. Almost eighteen thousand Palestinians have been killed in the past two months, more than the entire population of the city of Cheney. Look around and think about what it would mean if every single person in this town were wiped out in a matter of weeks. Can you even imagine that scale of death? Parents cradling the broken bodies of their children, doctors kidnapped and tortured for the crime of refusing to leave their patients to die. Creamy babies decomposing in their incubators. Witnessing this level of human suffering is almost too much to bear, but I cannot look away and we cannot look. I decided to become more engaged with the Cheney City Council almost a year ago. Because I care about this community where I am deeply rooted and I want it to be a place where everyone can thrive. I also believe in the potential for greater impact when we act and advocate at the most local level. However, as we zoom in to address police misconduct and accountability. Uh, predatory or negligent landlords, sustainability, budgets and city planning. Seeking to make our community more safe, more fair, more accessible and more livable for everyday people. We cannot lose sight of our neighbors halfway around the world who have those same needs. The people of Cheney need and deserve clean, safe water. The people of Palestine need and deserve clean, safe water. The people of Cheney need and deserve adequate, stable housing without fear of displacement, so someone else can profit. The people of Palestine need and deserve adequate and stable housing where they can live without fear of displacement. I hope that as our local government goes about its business tonight of allocating and stewarding resources. And guiding policy and programming that will meet the needs of our community. We would also keep in mind those everyday people thousands of miles away who are suffering in part because of the actions and choices of our federal government. Thank you.
Thank you, Corinna. Anybody else? How about those joining us via Zoom?
Hi, Mayor Grover, can you hear me?
I can.
Hi, this is Karen Blair Huber, address four one one Presley Jive. And I, um, just want to thank all of our councilmen and women that are, this is their last council meeting. Um, you guys have done a wonderful job representing our city. Uh, I did want to jump on today and just encourage you to really think about the rate increases that you are, um, going to be reviewing and. Um, tonight and just kind of thinking about how such increases anywhere from ten percent all the way up to a hundred and twenty-four percent over the next five years. Is going to impact our community, businesses, our patrons, um, business, our homeowners like myself. Um, with. All the influx increases in, um, groceries and overall bills, increasing our utility services is going to be even more detrimental and hurting our. Families and businesses. Um, so just, I just encourage you to really think about that and maybe encourage you to pa- um, table it until the next council meeting when we have our new council members, um, to give them time to. Think about that and go, um, kind of think about what they are going into. And what you guys are, that way you guys are not passing something that our next council members may not want. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Anybody else? Oops, anybody on Zoom? Uh, one last shot out there in the crowd, anybody? Okay, let's move on to our minutes from our November twenty-eighth city council meeting. Um, had an opportunity to review those if there's no corrections, I'd accept the motion to approve them.
So move.
Thank you, I have a motion and a second to approve our regular city council meeting minutes from November twenty-eighth. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, our minutes are approved. Vouchers and payroll Cindy.
Um, total expenditures at a million twenty-seven thousand, four hundred fifteen dollars and ninety seven, ninety-six cents. Plus some manual checks at twenty-six thousand, seven hundred sixty-one dollars and thirty-four for a total of. One million fifty-four thousand, one hundred seventy-seven dollars and thirty cents and total payroll of one million, one hundred sixty-three thousand, four hundred forty-nine dollars and ninety-six cents.
Your honor, the finance committee reviews these items, I would move approval.
Second. Thank you, I have a motion and a second to approve our vouchers and payroll as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you Cindy, payroll and vouchers are approved. Did not have any claims for damages, but you could see on the agenda that there was, uh, many small contracts that I signed, uh, mostly for our recreation department. And before we move on on the information items, I didn't list it, but I wanted to echo what's already been said and on behalf of the citizens of the city of Cheney, wanted to thank. Jill, um, Ryan and Dan, and I'd like to present. An appreciation plaque to you, Jill, an appreciation of your dedicated service to the city of Cheney as a city council member. From January two thousand and eleven to December two thousand and twenty-three. Thank you for your service. Mr. Guard. An appreciation of your dedicated service to the city of Cheney and on behalf of the citizens of Cheney, we want to thank you. Uh, as a city council member from October two thousand and fourteen to December two thousand and twenty-three. Thank you for your. And again, on behalf of the citizens of Cheney, an appreciation of your dedicated service. As a city council member from January two thousand sixteen to December two thousand twenty-three. Thank you, sir, for your service. We're going to miss you all for sure. Okay, we don't have any appointments today, but we do have a plethora of action items and we're going to move right into a public hearing. I'm going to open this public hearing for the two thou- uh, twenty twenty-four budget. Cindy.
Thank you, your honor. You've seen, you've seen and heard a lot about budgets this year. Um, as you know, we've had public hearings for our property tax assessments, we've had revenue, property tax, revenue, public hearing to look at our current revenue status. As well as what we're projecting for twenty twenty-four. You heard from every department, you heard from public safety first, you then heard from public works in life. And last week we finished up with the rest of us, whole governmental people, finance, park and rec, admin and courts. That is it for the presentations. Uh, this is the final chance to hear from the public, um, on any, uh, presented budget items. Um, and after this public hearing is over and closed, then of course there is the, uh, budget ordinance that comes in ordinances at the end of the agenda. But this is the opportunity to hear from the, if there's any further comments.
Thank you Cindy, and I am going to open this up, well, it's an open public hearing, so is there any comments from the public on our twenty twenty-four budget as presented? Either in the crowd or on Zoom. Anybody? Going once? Your opportunity, going twice? Thank you Cindy, I appreciate that. And I'm going to close this public hearing and we'll move on to our resolutions. The first one, resolution F two one seven. This is the establishing the sewer and solid waste rates, Todd.
Um, I can pull up the, the rate schedule if you want. Have Mark do it if you want to have that discussion, but as you recall, last council meeting, uh, instructed staff to come back with the resolution. Getting a five-year plan for both these solid waste rates. So in front of you is ordinance, uh, F two seventeen, which described as similar to what we did last year, uh, that kind of sets the, um. FCS rate study structure and puts us at that, uh, twenty twenty-four to twenty. The exhibit, uh, C and D, um, is the rates that you. On the resolution, so with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thanks Todd. Any questions for Todd on the sewer and solid waste rates for twenty twenty-four through twenty twenty-eight?
Let's start with, go ahead, Mark. Um, I know we didn't talk about this maybe when we first talked about, but will a rate increase include any money to be saved for future projects or infrastructure or personnel?
Yeah, the, the, uh, the FCS study is, is taking a look at, um, pretty much the operations and maintenance and how to sustain that, but also how to pay off any debt as far as the sewer goes. Obviously, the solid waste does not have debt, but taking a look at that, plus all the capital items that should be, um, attended to and replaced.
Okay, good. Question, any other questions for Todd? It's your pleasure. Motion.
Well, I'll, I'll, uh, make a motion to approve res- resolution F two one seven.
Second. Thank you, I have a motion and a second to approve resolution F two one seven, establishing our sewer and solid waste rates. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you Todd, resolution two one seven passes, resolution F two zero nine, this is settling, uh, twenty twenty-four solid waste garbage and sewer rates. Go ahead Cindy.
Thank you, your honor, so I.
Setting, sorry.
I neglected to put the actual resolution in the packet, so I handed you all out of coffee, anyone left? Um, the actual resolution itself, what was in the packet was the, uh, so already, you already approved in November. The electric and water rate increases and you set those to be effective with the January billing. So that's over here. What this is for is for the garbage and the sewer rates. Um, this is put them all in one resolution. Now the garbage and sewer rates would not be effective until the February billing. And that's what the resolution says, basically just says that it's, that, but this just puts them all in under one format, so to speak, and that way we can publish them that way on the website and, and move forward. This is also, as, as you recall, electric and water, we use those rate increases that FCS recommended. In January of two thousand twenty-three, those were over here. Now you just approved this, this plan that FCS has brought forward for garbage and sewer and we will, we will use that this year. And then use that in future years for budgeting as well. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you Cindy, any questions for Cindy? Questions or comments?
I would move for approval unless you have question. Resolution F two zero nine.
Second.
Thank you, I have a motion and a second to approve resolution F two zero nine, setting our twenty twenty-four solid waste garbage sewer rates. Any final questions for Cindy? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you Cindy, resolution two zero nine passes. Uh, resolution two one one Cindy, you're still up, this is the twenty twenty-three write-off of uncollected accounts.
Yes, thank you, so the next two items we do every year in December, typically. The utility write-offs, we have not done since pre-COVID. There were people that had some outstanding bills and they wanted a chance to pay those off and we, we kind of held back on doing any of that until. Until we were able to get a handle on that and make sure that we had collected everything that we could collect on that. So what you have in front of you is a total of fourteen thousand, seven hundred five dollars and thirty-nine cents and that is from pre-COVID to now, which. I think is, is, is a good number. There are some of those that are under fifty dollars and those kind of sit over on one side, then there's some, the rest of them, we have a statute of limitations that we have to collect these utility bills. And these are past that statute of limitations. And then there are a few small park and recreation, um, outstanding receivables that need to be written off as well. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you Cindy, any questions for Cindy, um?
Your honor, the finance committee also reviewed these items and, uh, if there are no other questions from council, I would move approval.
Second. Thank you, I have a motion and a second to approve res- resolution two one two, the twenty twenty-three commitments, oh, I'm sorry. Twenty. Twenty one, where am I at? Uh, resolution F two one one, the twenty twenty-three write-off of uncollected accounts. Thank you, any final comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you Cindy, resolution F two one one passes. Still up there, uh, resolution F two one two, twenty twenty-three commitments of governmental revenue streams, Cindy.
So to remind you of what this is, uh, Gatsby fifty-four says that anything that's a governmental revenue that we receive that does not live in the general fund. That we put into a different fund, we have to identify that. And this body, the city council, you're in charge of the commitment column. And that means finance committee took a look at this earlier and they're in charge of assigning, and those are lower level revenues, those are interest. Those are miscellaneous things that come in. Um, the commitment is more, for instance, parks and recreation, where we decided to create a fund. For transparency purposes and put all the money for parks and recreation in its own fund, so everyone can see what's going on there. We did the same thing with the residential street program. Both of those were citizen-approved taxes and we felt it was really important to be very transparent with that money coming in and what that was spent on. So we, you chose to put those in separate funds. Um, there are things like the, we have a new debt service fund this year and we have a new capital project fund for the pool creation. Those are commitments, we are committing those over into those funds, again, for total transparency sake. Uh, we are choosing to put things like sale of maybe a street truck into the street equipment reserve fund. Or anything with the fire department that they might surplus goes into the fire department reserve fund. So all those are choices that we're making with those revenues as opposed to just funneling them all into the general fund. And that's what you're doing here as this is the highest decision-making body that the city of Cheney has. You are responsible for committing the funds as I, as I have identified on the table in front of you. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you Cindy, any questions for Cindy on committing government revenue streams?
Really quick question, there's two unassigned funds, I'm assuming those were just not applicable or?
Unassigned is those, um, they don't. Yes, so the way that there's, um, when you look at fund balances and governmental funds, there's restricted, which is legally restricted, you know, restricted. Committed, assigned and unassigned and unassigned funds come. committed, assigned and unassigned, and unassigned funds come over as like a miscellaneous thing that came in for this purpose that's that doesn't, that, that's not really an operating revenue. I guess that's how I'm gonna say that. That isn't something we would expect to receive.
That's Doesn't fit comfortably in any
Pardon me?
Doesn't fit comfortably in any line.
Correct. Otherwise, it just applies into the assigned, into the assigned world. A lot of stuff in the general fund flies into the unassigned, but I don't have to specifically identify all that because it's already in the general fund. And we are choosing to move things from the general fund to these other funds. That's why a lot of that stuff isn't.
That, that makes sense.
Yes or no?
It goes back to the general fund. I got you.
Yeah.
If you can understand now. Sorry I asked.
Well, well, if I may, Your Honor, uh, Government Accounting Board, or what's the S stand?
Government and account, governmental accounting standards.
Standard. They're out there in the ether somewhere, but the state auditor relies on this. They'll check. And it is, it's, it's nothing more than a transparency effort to show where our funds rest. And you can pull it up and there they're all there and we're supposed to agree to that and then
We're audited against.
The auditor, the auditors look at it and if they're happy, then we're happy, but Gatsby is just it's, they're, they're for a purpose, but
As, as Cindy mentioned, the Finance Committee has reviewed this as we do annually, and I would move approval.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion in a second to approve resolution F two one two, our twenty twenty-three commitment of government revenue services. Any questions?
I do have a question. Yeah, sorry. So just adding on to what Councilman Bartel's mentioned, how, how does, how does it go from unassigned to assigned? Is it just, does it just
Most of them are assigned. Most of them are assigned. Um, so without getting into our accounting four oh one class, um, things that are unassigned.
I mean, if it just sits there for us to make a decision about later, I'm fine with that.
It doesn't, so this
How that process works.
The only thing that has a look back over the course of the year. This is the only thing that does. So, I mean, I can look at this now and I look at all the revenues that have come in, anywhere, until this point, and what I think we're going to get for the rest. So if they're sitting in unassigned, that just means it's gonna sit in the unassigned column, and that means they're extremely minimal, is what that means. Extremely minimal. So that there's not really a need to assign them anywhere.
Right. Yeah, it does. Thanks. Any other, that's good.
Any other questions? Do I have a motion in a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Cindy. F two one two passes. Mr. Marx, I think, or are you, you doing the
Pinch it tonight for D, okay, resolution F two one three. Project. Um, this is a, a change order, uh, in the amount of eighteen hundred and seventy-eight, uh, where we added two cameras uh, to the utility building. In doing the security around the utility building, there was a plan to put two security cameras, one to two security cameras on pole. But when we uh, got links integrated in there and taking a look at their camera capability, we were able to mount them on the utility buildings on the corner and still pick it up. Decision was instead of going that extra cost of, of providing a pole and running more string, it was easier just to run the, the uh, the wiring right to each point. That is what the change order really reflects. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, Todd. Any questions for Todd on our UV security camera? Uh, I'd move for passage of resolution F two one three, second. Thank you. I have a motion in a second to approve resolution two one three, our UV security camera upgrade change order number one. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Todd. Resolution two one three passes. Uh, resolution F two one four, de-icing skid sprayer purchase, Todd.
Timing is everything. Uh, so we have, uh, this was budgeted uh, for twenty twenty-three, and we finally uh, got everything all put together. Uh, and we received a quote. It was just a little over fifteen thousand. Council put it as a, as a replacement in twenty twenty-three in the amount of fifteen thousand. This is a, a, a contract type um, uh, unit, and it will replace our older unit. And I'll be happy to answer the question. It is actually the one that sprays all of the
Thanks, Todd. Questions for Todd?
If there are no further, if there are no questions, I would make a motion to approve resolution F two one four, second.
Thank you. I have a motion in a second to approve resolution two F two one four, de-icing skid sprayer purchase. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Todd. Resolution two F two one four passes. Resolution F two one five, well five PFAS funding agreement, Todd.
Well, um, the city received four million dollars from, uh, basically the Department of Health, uh, to mitigate well five. Uh, we submitted an application, uh, with the understanding, the scope that we would, we would look at some type of filtration system for, for well five. Uh, we received the four million dollars in what they, they package, so it's very confusing uh, to that end. But uh, in, in, in your packet, you do have the actual agreement. And I'm going to kind of point out the loan information on section three point where they state the loan forgiveness percentage is one hundred percent of the, uh, of the loan. So whatever we spend on it, as long as it is eligible up on it, then that loan will become one hundred percent forgivable. It's, it's explained in section four point eight down below. Um, so it is eighteen months, um, to notice to proceed to construct, uh, but they do, uh, ask us to sign this agreement within sixty days. We received the agreement in November first. That's why you're here tonight. Discussing Public Works Committee. Um, i- it, it's not conclusive that, that we use a filter mitigation. There are other talks, so we will during that eighteen, maybe, uh, talk about different possibly just abandon that well and have eighteen months to kind of discuss the approach if you want. Hopefully, we'll get DOH to approve whatever that is. Um, the third thing is there is a clause in there, um, about, I need a legal kind of a, a check on, on one aside that we have entered into any litigation. That I'd be happy to answer.
Thanks, Todd. Any questions for Todd? Hundred percent subsidized. That's nice. Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, in reading through it, my one question on it was if the, it comes back after all of the, you know, investigation on it, that well five would be better off shut down, can we use those funds to dig a well and pay for a well somewhere else?
That, that is, that's what we're discussing right now. If, if we, if we get an approved scope over and, and DOH is willing to say, yeah, that is an eligible cost based on this, um, then yes, we would, we would proceed that.
Right.
It's typical. Th- this is a, this is to make sure that we just don't go out and, you know, pave roads or do something to that end. We, that's what, that's their hammer to say, these are eligible costs, so we will be working with DOH. We have to sign off on everything that we do, uh, leading to this, this PFAS mitigation. So, uh, we'll, we'll uh, see what the best, um, resource is for mitigation.
Great. Any other guests? Go ahead, Paul.
Just, uh, Todd, I know do we know, is this a reimbursable offer?
It's a one-year. When they sign it, I think it's twelve years prior. Um, so we could go back and take a look.
But of the four million, I guess what I'm gonna ask is, we need to spend the money first and then they'll reimburse us. So then there's a one percent admin fee.
One percent, yeah, we, we rewarded forty, uh, four million, and you noticed that it was four million forty thousand. They went ahead and added that on. They didn't ask for that, but they went ahead and added that on.
So they're gonna borrow us the forty thousand so we can pay them. Um, the, uh, and we've talked about this, well, uh, it, it's, you know, lengthened the public works. And I'm still not sold that it's cost-effective to treat PFAS at well five. I mean, I mean, we could we can build, I mean, this will pay for a treatment plant literally on site. We'll have no idea what the O and M is gonna be, and when you look at what it costs to produce a, a gallon of drinking water going through this setup. I'm really nervous, so, but we don't have a chance if we don't go along with it and we're not committed. I think we could send it back if it doesn't work out at all, if we don't spend anything. So I, I'm assuming it's the right course to take, but this PFAS thing is getting real scary. And I don't know how they figured, we're gonna figure, one of the uh, line items is we're trying to identify the source, and I don't know how we, we're gonna do that.
Yeah, I think, I think that's, that's one of the hard things to identify. I mean, obviously, we've been out test boring and we understand that we don't have a good understanding where, uh, that's, that's all to come up in the report.
Ready? Yeah, it's just unsettling, but we don't have a well without it. And and when was the, you recall the last production, when it was, were we still around five hundred gallons a minute?
Uh, for well five?
Five, yeah.
Well, five is a, is a, um, we're safe at five hundred gallons per minute. Uh, if we do crank it up, I mean, it has the capacity of probably around uh, that's when we start getting turbidity.
It, it's an interesting, it's a two thousand one hundred and ninety feet or seventy feet deep. But it'll be interesting if we get into this. I'm curious in that the column, when they drill, the column separated around five, six hundred feet, so there's a gap. And there's water coming in from that gap, and then there's, at the bottom, there, there's water that, uh, is, is a different source. And I don't know if we sealed off that five hundred foot area and sealed that off and just took from the bottom, we might not have any PFAS.
I don't, I don't believe we, I think that was, was sealed off. I mean, obviously, we have two conflicting aquifers on um, and, and that. So I, I, I think what we're looking at also is right immediately around well itself, uh, around the concrete pad and about twenty foot down is where our, our zone of, of interest is.
No, I, I don't know that we have a whole, too many other options unless we wanna just walk away from it altogether, which I don't think we should do that either, but but I, I guess, and we're gonna go into it cautiously.
Todd, how old is that well?
Uh, oh, I, I believe it was right around the version seventy.
One, one more, Todd, I guess, if, because we haven't run with well five for about a year, year and a half, we could, we could operate without it, correct? If we just decided to shut it off and
Well, yeah, you have to understand that, um, well three was really the, you know, saved us a little bit because we weren't anticipating volume out uh, to be nearly thirteen hundred, you know, uh, uh, you know, in reality, when you, you get a new well on site, we know that we'll probably lose production. Uh, for example, well eight, uh, was almost a nine hundred gallon from or now it's down to two hundred. Um, there could be things that we need to research underneath of why. Um, so when we first, uh, drilled well three back, I think it was sixty, sixty-three, that was a nine hundred gallon per minute producer. And, and we lost it in two thousand and twelve. It was less than a hundred gallons and it just wouldn't, it wouldn't produce. Um, so the decision was made to, to abandon that well and re-drill right next to it within thirty to fifty feet. Uh, and to go down deeper than it was. It was right around, uh, six hundred foot, five, six hundred foot level. Uh, we actually went down pane of water, uh, right around that level. Do seem good fall, but they haven't been, uh, to the point where we, we do have, have a little bit of decline, not too much. But history goes within the next five, ten years. Decline. So the need for an additional five hundred gallons is out there, uh, but also the need for pipe project to handle all of the, the heavy times when we need it is very important as well
Right.
to sustain our, our drinking and potable water through our domestic wells. So that, that's kind of the game plan. Um, yeah, and, and so to, to totally disregard well five and take it out of the picture without having I think down have to address sometime.
Yes, so, any other questions? With that, you have a question?
No, no, I didn't.
Oh. I have no questions, but I'm always up for accepting four million dollars. So with that, I would, um, move to approve resolution F two one five.
Second. Thank you. I have a motion in a second to, uh, approve resolution F two one five, well five PFAS funding agreement. Any final comments or questions? There's none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Todd. F two one five passes. F two one six, North Genie Mobile Home Park Real Estate Exchange Agreement, Todd.
Yeah, so, um, we were, uh, staff was kind of negotiating with, with the property owner, um, uh, Todd Tarbert, uh, he purchased six, almost seven acres down below, right off of Genie Spangle Road. Um, and he was looking to start developing that, but what we ran into is that we do have water that kind of runs so, uh, what you have in front of you, in front of you is a purchase and sale or exchange agreement, uh, to, to, uh, have the city obtain that six point nine four acres of that lowland area between BNSF and Union Pacific Railroad in exchange for one acre lot, uh, in the industrial park. As you see on the exhibits, uh, we went and parceled a one acre lot off. Uh, they are interested also if they, if this, uh, if this goes through, uh, in purchasing the other two acre lots, because there is an interest to do uh, some type of, um, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, Todd. Any questions for Todd on this exchange?
Well, this is a pretty exciting one.
Yeah.
I'll move for approval. Of resolution F two one six.
I have a motion in a second to approve resolution F two one six. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Todd. Resolution F two one six passes. I think Mark, you're up next. Uh, resolution F two one eight, this is agreement with Reed Legal Office for Defense Services.
Yes, uh, so, uh, Northwest Law, who had been our contract, uh, public defender, uh, was unable to continue on. Um, so, uh, we put out, uh, an RFP, uh, we had Reed Law Office, uh, uh, submitted uh, for it. Uh, the good news is that Reed had been sort of our conflict public defender, so they have full knowledge of, uh, the operation of our court. Uh, they understand, uh, the importance we placed on the therapeutic court. Uh, they're bought in, um, talking to our court staff and our judge. They are very comfortable with Reed Law. The terms of the contract are very exactly, to be honest, similar to the agreement with, uh, uh, Northwest Law. Uh, only the names have changed. Um, so, uh, the mayor and I had an opportunity to interview, uh, the head of the law firm, Derek Reed, and uh, one of his attorneys, Megan Kane, who will be performing most of the work, um, out here. Um, I think they're excellent lawyers. I think they will provide a great service, uh, to those that need it, and so uh, I would highly encourage you to approve this resolution, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, Mark. Questions for Mark?
Well, Mayor, the, in the, in, it's hard to come by, public defenders are so I would wholeheartedly, uh, make the motion to approve resolution F dash two one eight.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion in a second to approve resolution two F two one eight, our agreement with Reed Legal Office for Defense Services. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Mark. Resolution F two one eight passes. And Cindy, let's move on to some ordinances. Ordinance, uh, Y fifty-seven, twenty twenty-four budget.
Twenty-four budget ordinance. So it's just kind of on the heels of our public hearing. Um, after, during last council meeting, you made a change to add a hundred thousand dollars to the light department budget to fund an electrical study. We had money budgeted in ending fund balance, so I moved that money from ending fund as carryover to next year, up to fund this particular item, so it didn't change the, the, the total of the budget at all. So the total budget remains seventy-seven million five hundred ninety-nine thousand five hundred dollars, of which the total ending fund balances, which are twenty-five the total ending fund balances, which are twenty-five percent reserves, our cash carryovers to next year. Um debt reserves are fifteen million, nine hundred fifty-eight thousand, four hundred dollars. I'd be happy to answer any questions I'm asking for the third and final.
Thank you. Any any questions for Cindy on this final reading of our twenty twenty-four budget ordinance? Go ahead, Paul.
It should be noted as well that in finance, we discussed was we're more likely going to be amending this budget fairly soon, beginning in twenty twenty-four to address hydrant issue. So that's not in here, but it will be forthcoming.
Any other comments, questions? Looking for final passage of budget.
No one has any more questions. I would move for the third and final reading of ordinance P ninety, oops, or not. Right, P ninety-five?
Why fifty-seven?
I'm from. Uh Y fifty-seven, entitled summary form only, and it placed before us for final passage.
Second. Thank you. I have a motion in second for the third and final reading of ordinance Y fifty-seven, the twenty twenty-four budget ordinance, entitled in summary form only, and then it be placed before you all for final passage. Any final comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And are you gonna read that, Cindy? Go ahead.
Ordinance Y fifty-seven, an ordinance adopting the budget for the city of Cheney, Washington for the fiscal year ending December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four, and providing for the effective date hereup.
Thank you, Cindy. Councilmember Oberhauser.
Aye.
Councilmember Schmidt.
Aye.
Councilmember Bartels.
Aye.
Councilmember Weisman.
Aye.
Councilmember Guard.
Aye.
Councilmember Hilton.
Aye.
And Councilmember Postuma.
Aye.
Thank you, Cindy. Our twenty twenty-four budget is approved. Ordinance Y fifty-eight, this is our twenty twenty-three budget amendment number three. Cindy, go ahead.
Yes, thank you. So in that, when you're looking at your packet, you have the wrong budget worksheet. I handed one out to everyone. If I can draw your attention to that, please. So yes, this is our third budget amendment. As Councilmember Schmidt just talked about, we, you know, we've gotten to where we amend the budget, you know, three, sometimes four times a year, you know, spring, summer, fall, and winter is kind of how that rolls, and that is just to incorporate unfunded items that come up that all of a sudden can become funded. So if all of a sudden there's a great project that comes up, if there's a great grant that we can get to get a fire truck, we'll amend the budget so we can purchase a fire truck. Uh we can do the same for the fire hydrants, um those type of things. That's the reason that we amend amend those mostly at the end of the year. The department heads go through their budgets and they look at revenues that they may have received that they weren't expecting, and then they look at places where maybe they've spent a little more than they were expecting to. You know, overtime's a a a good example of that in the light department. Um there were also some, you know, increased. We had increased purchase power because we purchased more power than we had budgeted, but we sold that power. So we had increased revenues and increased expenditures. So there's, that's why when you look at that, there's always a funding source and an expenditure. On a couple of these, though, I will draw your attention. Um in the fire equipment reserve fund, I'm just moving money from their cash carryover down to handle some capital maintenance items on some fire trucks. Um in the street equipment reserve fund, we budgeted fifteen thousand dollars for that streets, that sprayer that that Todd just talked about. And with taxes, it's going to be a little bit more than that, so I'm moving some down from that cash carryover to fund that as well. The rest of these are all from revenues, and I tried really hard to capture revenues. Um I tried hard to capture interest in all these because it was a great interest year for us. And so to be able to use that interest for some of these additional expenses was great. So happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Cindy. Any questions for Cindy on our uh third budget amendment for twenty twenty-three?
Questions? I would move for the first, second, and third reading of ordinance Y fifty-eight, and then it be placed before us in title and summary form only and for final passage.
Second. Thank you. I have a motion in second for the first reading of ordinance Y fifty-eight uh that amendment number three to our twenty twenty-three budget, and that the first be considered the second and third. And then uh it'd be it'd be placed before you for final passage in title and summary form only. Did I get that? Uh all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Cindy.
Ordinance Y fifty-eight and ordinance amending section two of ordinance Y fifty-two, amending the budget for the city of Cheney, Washington for the fiscal year ending December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three, and providing for the effective date hereup.
Thank you, Cindy. Councilmember Oberhauser.
Aye.
Councilmember Schmidt.
Aye.
Councilmember Bartels.
Aye.
Councilmember Weisman.
Aye.
Councilmember Guard.
Aye.
Councilmember Hilton.
Aye.
And Councilmember Postuma.
Aye.
Thank you, Cindy. Ordinance Y fifty-eight passes. And Mark, final, final ordinance, Y fifty-five, our twenty twenty-four salary ordinance.
As we do at this time every year, we bring forward the salary ordinance for the upcoming year. Um this one uh will look a little different. Uh we did some reformatting, um kind of updated with with the times and kind of took a look at what some of the other cities were doing in terms of their salary ordinances, and so uh really tried to just simplify things and also be, you know, very, very transparent. So uh we cleaned this up a bit. Um you'll see the big grid basically with all the um, you know, wage classifications and everything. And for the first time, we calculated both an an hourly, a monthly, and an annual rate. So you can see that for all the positions staffed within the city. Um as far as the numbers go, uh this is a um uh salary ordinance that includes all of the negotiated uh labor contract increases, the cost of living adjustments. Uh we did do a four percent uh cost of living adjustment for our nonrepresented employees. Um you know, basically just based off the cost of living numbers and and things that are out there. Um pretty simple overall, no major changes other than the in the than the formatting. Um we will bring a back um another salary uh uh ordinance once we uh finalize our two labor contracts that are under negotiation right now, uh but that'll be after the first. So uh I'll be happy to answer any questions, but uh appreciate Kerry's work uh putting all this together. There was a typo on the cover sheet. Um minimum wage is not sixteen twenty-four, sixteen twenty-eight, but the numbers in the actual um ordinance itself are correct, so. I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mark. Any questions for Mark on her, excuse me, our salary ordinance for twenty twenty-four?
Your honor, the finance committee did review this briefly um before, as we ran out of time, but anyway, uh I would move for all three readings of ordinance Y fifty-five, entitled in summary form only, and it be placed before us for final passage.
Second. Thank you. I have a motion in second for all three readings of ordinance Y fifty-five, entitled in summary form only, and then it be placed before you for final passage. Any final comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Mark. Go ahead, Cindy.
Ordinance Y fifty-five, an ordinance fixing companies and compensation for appointive officers and employees of the city of Cheney, fixing the effective date thereof, repealing ordinance Y forty-three, and providing for the effective date hereup.
Thank you, Cindy. Councilmember Oberhauser. Councilmember Schmidt.
Aye.
Councilmember Bartels.
Aye.
Councilmember Weisman.
Aye.
Councilmember Guard.
Aye.
Councilmember Hilton.
Aye.
And Councilmember Postuma.
Aye.
Thank you all. Or uh ordinance Y fifty-five passes. That concludes our action items. Do you have any staff reports, Mark?
We have a couple. Uh Cindy would like to make an announcement.
I would.
Kick that off.
I sent I sent you all a little notice, so after thirty-six years, Lori Hales hanging up her adding machine and turning in her bank code and getting her retired life. So um we are having an open house here in council chambers, uh just a little cake and coffee thing. If you'd like to come say goodbye, wish her well. Um you know, I worked with her for a long time. I started six months before she did, and life's gonna be a little different here without her for sure. So um but we certainly wish her all the happiness, so she's welcome to join us.
Thank you.
Okay.
It's at two o'clock on Friday, two to four.
Uh for mine, more exciting news. Pool demolition started, uh very aggressive uh uh attack to dumb demolish the old pool. They started on Monday. Uh if you've driven past there, they've done a tremendous amount of work so far. Uh they're supposed to wrap everything up by the twenty-second, I believe. That's scheduled, Todd. Um but so great progress there, making good progress on the um conceptual design of the new pool. Um we continue to meet weekly on that, so um some great progress there as well. And then finally, I just want to say thanks to all the city employees for all the hard work they do, and especially our crews that came in and plowed the snow this weekend. See them out there clearing the streets to to make it as safe as possible for our community. So that's it, Mayor.
Thanks, Mark. Mine, I I want to say again, thank you to Jill, uh Dan and Ryan for your service to the city and it it it's take somebody special to put your name on that that list, say, I'm gonna serve the city, you know, because most of us can't quit our day jobs to do this job, but uh um I really do appreciate it. We're gonna miss you for sure. Teresa?
Tree looks great. Sorry, I think you guys got rained on, but.
Yeah, a little bit, not too bad.
Anyway, the tree looks great uh as you drive through town in the evening in particular. Um thank you to your staff for not covering the sidewalks on Washington Hill. That's a lot of people walk down that hill, and that's that's great. Um uh yes, congratulations to everyone and their, not everyone, the the three with all your new free time. So um there are a couple of things I was gonna mention after. Oh, thank you for undertaking finally the, I shouldn't say finally, we've been really busy. But we've been talking about the downtown.
Yes.
Efforts, and I'm so glad um that we're going to be working with them on on some plans, and I I think that's, you know, it's just it it's hopefully it works out really well and a good outcome is found. I uh have a lot of, I I'm I'm really hopeful and optimistic about it. Uh and then also, thank you for the reports. We got a verbal report last week or last meeting on some things, and then staff or Todd, you followed up with those uh documents that people ask for. I appreciate the follow-up, so thank you. That's it.
Thanks, Teresa. Paul.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I um I want to echo all the same sentiments, my colleagues here for their time. Again, this is a volunteer. It's you spend a lot of hours and you only just see the business side up here, but appreciate your service. It means a lot, and you served the city well. Also want to commend the mayor and Mark and staff for putting together a really good budget. And I I understand and and uh agree in that when we adjust utilities, we study that and analyze that and try to do what we can and my colleague here on on the left went to the first solid waste um meeting with the county, and here they are already raising the tipping fees. I mean, and you try to run these as a business, but but we we take it very seriously on how we adjust rates and already keep up with inflation and and the costs as such and um we have a, damn, we're gonna need you for one more meeting for public works utility.
There.
Thursday, ten o'clock, I think we're still on, so.
I could do one more.
All right. After that, then I just wish everyone to have a happy holiday season here coming up. Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks, Paul.
Like, I'm gonna sound like a broken record, but uh thank you, staff, for getting through the budget season so officially good presentations and seeing my in the process, so thank you. Yeah, and again, to the three that have served for many years and some over a decade, thank you for all your service, and we'll truly miss all each and every one of you, so thank you.
Thanks, man.
Okay, um I want to really just thank everybody here. Um I want to thank you for your your leadership and and your support. Um yeah, it's been a long time, you know, three years on Harvard Commission and then twelve here. Um it's gonna be different. No, I'm not quite sure what's gonna happen, where where I'm gonna end up, what I'm doing, but um I'm just really appreciative of the work that's been done um in the city, the progress that's been made. Um and working and and serving with all of you in, you know, my my biggest thing is thinking about not having the the close communication on a more frequent um timeline, but I'll still be around. I'm not going anywhere, at least not yet. And um but I will miss interacting with you. I want to say Merry Christmas, Happy New Year to everybody. I don't know if we're having public safety meeting or not, but if we do, I'll be at that in our last meeting and um to the the pool, um I got a phone call and a reminder to go take some photos, so I have a bunch of photos for you. So it's looking pretty amazing, and half the building is gone already, and the kiddie pool is already gone. And um so they're moving quite rapidly, and I was told I better go back tomorrow, so I'll go back tomorrow, and I'm assuming the other half of the building will be gone then. So um it's moving right along, so that'll be fun, but all I can really say is, thank you. Thank you to my family, my friends for being here and supporting me. Oh, I appreciate that a lot. Thank you.
Hey, it's my turn. So, yeah, there's definitely months or meetings that don't fly by, but nine years kind of flew by. Um obviously, city staff. You don't know what they're doing until you like get involved, and they run, I mean, they run the city like the the saying, they keep the lights on, like they literally keep the lights on. People go to use a sink, they don't realize how much goes on behind the scenes to make that happen. Fire, police, people show up within minutes to save lives. Um people just take it for granted all the time, but we get it here in Cheney. Um gotta thank the council members that are coming in, thank the council members that are going out, currently staying, um and the ones from the past that, you know, we're here and maybe not here anymore. Um Mayor Grover. Tom Trulove, who's previous mayor when we were here. I learned a lot. Um and poor people who are curious about the city and how it works and, you know, they see how the sausage is made, you know, um sorry, I like that analogy. Maybe not city council, there's lots of communities, there's opportunities, there's um other other ways to get involved. Um be part of a great accomplishment, you know, so that's it. Thanks, everybody.
Thanks, Ryan.
Okay, well, I just want to say thank you to everybody for putting up with me. I know I wasn't the most vocal in in this crowd. That was Paul, but uh it it truly was an honor and uh, you know, I always kind of consider myself just to be the average guy that grew up in this town and and hopefully I gave that perspective to everybody. Um as for the staff, there is some tremendous people that are working in the city. I mean, they're so impressive. Um and it's it's interesting to see how everything runs once you understand, you know, how it all works, because you have no idea until you get into this. But I, you know, I think that the council has is it's an excellent council. I think we've done a good job, you know, when we my first started out eight years ago, we had budget issues, we had cutbacks we had to deal with. Then we got through that and it was kind of some smooth sailing, and then COVID hit, and that wasn't so smooth. Um but we're over that, and I think the future should be bright for Cheney, and I I hope the, you know, the next council continues to look at both sides of every issue. You know, not just the loudest person in the crowd, you know, look at both sides, so uh with that, I wish him best of luck, and it truly was an honor. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Dan. Mark.
All right. Well, I want to also say thank you to the three of you for serving as a newbie, right? Um you helped me a lot. There were times where I kind of looked to you to make a comment or say something, and that was very helpful for me and even just private conversations and things like that. It's been really great, Dan. It's been great to sit next to you as a council member. It's been fun. And uh I really, really enjoyed that, and so uh we're gonna miss you. You did a great job, and thanks so much for serving our chief, our city. Um to the staff, as the new guy as well, I also want to say, this is my second budget cycle, and I just want to say, great job. I mean, as a new person trying to figure out a seventy-seven million dollar budget, your reports are super helpful to me, and so I just want to say to all the staff, thank you so much for the hard work you do. Uh even just putting a PowerPoint presentation together, it takes a lot of time and effort, and to show us all of that and to make it understandable is really, really helpful, and I want to say thank you as well for doing a good job with your budgets. And um and helping our city be a great city to live in in the state of Washington, and that's a result of your hard work, and so thank you so much for the staff. And lastly, just want to say Merry Christmas, everyone.
Thank you, Mark. Any final words of wisdom? Happy holidays to everybody. Everybody, please be safe. Would you want to be, Jill? Do the honors of adjournments?
I would move that we.
I would move that we adjourn.
Do I have a second? Motion and second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Right, thank you all very much.